The following presentation of the Sydney Town Council meeting held March 9th, 2023, is brought to you in living color by The Reporter, Delaware County's leading news source. We join the meeting already in progress.
Minutes from the previous meeting in town on February 9th, do I have a motion? Prove that is.
I'll go through the list.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Carry it. All right. General A Fund, 23-62 through 23-101, in the amount of $16,046. Or I'm sorry, $16,046. Have a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Carry it. General B Fund, 23-4, in the amount of $4.36.
I'll prove that.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Carry it. E Sydney Lake, 23-7 through 23-11, in the amount of $629.99.
I'll vote for it. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Carry it. Uh, let's see, SO 23-2, in the amount of $300.12.
I'm going to pay that.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Carry it. Welcome. You'll have to Photoshop yourself into the picture later, Bill.
That's okay. I break the lines anyway.
Uh, total general fund vouchers are $16,934.93. All right, Highway DA Fund, 23-42 through 23-56, in the amount of $7,720.21.
I'll make a motion for you to throw that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Carry it. All right, total highway fund vouchers, $77.20 and $21 cents. CM Hospital Fund, 23-27 through 23-45, in the amount of $12,574. No motion to approve that? I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Carry it. So total vouchers paid are $37,229.14. All right, correspondence.
I don't have any except for that. Do you want to say something about that, Frank, just to bring it up? Just for informational?
Yeah. We've noticed that Worcester got dinged for not auditing correctly. It deals with their procurement policy and not getting more than one bid on things. So we just copied that off and then passed it out to all our department heads. Yeah, so it's just a learning type tool.
All right. Um, let's see here. Do you want to mix this up a little bit? Um, I guess I'll just keep going. I was going to say if you could do this.
Probably just go to the reports personally.
Okay. All right, so monthly reports for the district town.
Well, I collected. Let's do this.
All right. Clerks submitted checks totaling $1,166 in fees during February 23rd.
It's supposed to be February 8th, I'm sorry.
Okay, just got it. All right, oral reports, Jamie.
Okay. So, anybody in the New York State retirement system that's an elected official, every... as soon as they get elected or before their term ends, they have to do a record of activity sheet. And after they get done with that record of activity sheet, the board has to look it over and decide what the standard workday is going to be. So I've done mine, I did my RWA, and Sheila did her RWA. And mine would be a standard eight-hour day, and Sheila's would be a 6.5-hour day. So we have to do a resolution to make that the eight-hour day and a six-hour day. And then this resolution has to be sent to the New York State Retirement System, and then they will go ahead and file it. And that this, your eight-hour day determines on when you retire, what they pay out. So...
So it's eight hours, 40 hours a week?
Yes. Yeah. That's as high as I could go. Yeah. So if everybody would, there's two of them, if everybody would like to sign those.
So there has to be, if you see that, there's going to be a motion on the first and second?
I didn't fill out.
No, because they have, somebody's going to, as far as I understand it...
Oh, right, you gotta do one.
Is that, that somebody has, I'll take those for right now, Frank, and then you just... So what it is, is it's a resolution on the net, it says, um, resolution offered by, and it has to be second, so it's actually kind of like a motion. Somebody's got a motion in the first, and then they have to have a second, and then the other board members have to sign. And it's how I under, that's how I understand it.
Yeah.
And it's pretty soft, you know, I've talked to other clerks, and I actually took a training on it. It's very, to me, it's complicated to a point, but I'm getting it. We do it for three months consistently. We have to put it down every, on the hours that we, what we do.
Go for your retirement.
Yeah.
And so it can go to anybody that's elected or appointed that's actually in the New York State Retirement Fund, Retirement Plan. I mean, all of you on the board can get involved in it, but you actually have to do an activity report to, for what you do as a board member or as an employee.
The county actually has one, it's a lot more detailed.
Yeah, we, yeah. But, like Jamie and I do, this is just a copy of, this is just a example of it, but I fill one of these out, and so does Jamie, and it's the record of activities. And we have to put it down every day, and what hours and what we do, and how many hours we do it. So...
All right, so we need to make a motion in order to...
You have to take a motion, and then whoever, I can fill out who does this, the first and the second, the data, and then everybody has to sign it, and then their titles on the board. Yes, Frank?
Is there something Lynn should do?
I don't know if she's on it. I don't, I don't know who's ever, I don't know if she's involved in it or not, because she's an assessor, so I think she has her own retirement situation on the Assessors' Association. No? Okay, then, no, I don't know then.
Frank, I'll make a motion that we, you know, please? I'm second. All right.
Do you have, do you have, is that worded so you read it as a motion or is...
No, it's a, it's a generic, it's just a, well, if you want, we can say, I, the motion was to be made to accept the resolution on 1.2023 and regarding the retirement, the New York State Retirement.
Yeah, it says, "Resolution be made to establish that Sidney Town Highway Superintendent standard workday be an eight-hour day."
Right.
For the New York State Retirement System, and a resolution be made to establish that the Sidney Town Court standard workday be a 6.5-hour day for the New York State Retirement System.
Now, what does a standard workday mean? Is that like a contract tool thing, where you're saying you're going to be here eight hours a day, or is it just that that's what you expect?
No.
It's funny that they wouldn't have a full week, though, why wouldn't they?
On average.
Yeah.
Because you get paid on a weekly basis.
And sometimes you're here for 12, 14 hours in a week, so...
It's because they go by, because if, so this, if you look at this, we have to write down every, for the whole week, every hour accounts. So on this one, it says July 7th, the taxpayer ran a meeting, it went from 1:00 to 2:00, that's one hour. And then there was something here, it says, "Preparing speech for the luncheon." They worked on it from 12:00 to 3:00 to set it up. So that's three hours. So we add up our hours, each, each hour we work every day, we have to account for every hour of what we do. And that's how, that's what we do to show that we are here. I mean, I can actually, you know, I get a death certificate, and I do it no matter where I'm at, and it takes me, you know, how long it ever takes me, and I can actually put that down, but anything that we do for the town, we can write down.
So that goes to them, they determine that you can do your job in seven and a half hours a day?
Well, that's because I put down the, for the month.
No, it's to do with the pension, the way it's weighted, I think.
Right. But see if I put down, if I did mine for three months, January, February, and March, because it's all my taxes, it would be more. And so, so, yeah, so, we got that. I'm going to put everybody's name in, and then I'll have everybody sign it, if you don't mind.
Okay. All right. Jamie, do you have anything else?
There is. So this is the month that I have to request for a motion to go out to put our highway supplies and our mowing bids out. So, we would put the mowing bids and the highway supplies out at the same time, they'll be in the paper on the last two weeks of March and then April. First, we'll open the bids on the 6th, and then we will award them at the board meeting on the 13th.
Now, we just approved all our last meeting at the county. You have access to those same rates and everything, right?
I called today, and she's working on them, and she's going to fax those rates over by the end.
I have them in the car if you want.
Oh, sure. Okay. But yes, because that's where we get our gravel, and we use their bid for our black copying, and wherever we can, we use their bid, right, yeah? Yep. Okay. So I'll get those in the paper. Sheila will. Also, let's see, you got, we have two trucks, and only one of them are being repaired. So, when we're down a truck, it takes longer to get the roots plowed. Right now, we have six roots. Each root is done every, each guy goes in, he does the same root every time. So if we're down a truck, that means that everybody still does their same root, but then we have to go and divide up the root that's not being taken care of. So it takes us longer to get done, so instead of using three and a half hours, we're using like five hours, because we got to go do the other route. So when we have a truck down, it does take longer, the overtime's going to be more. So with those two trucks being down, it's, it's taking more time to get things done. Our trucks are, Frank, got some stuff on them.
Yeah, I was going to...
Do you know, like, overall, like, this year, we've been fortunate, we haven't had that much, no, though, eight hours?
This is, Saturday was the first time this happened to us, where we had to divide the roots up and go out after. Yeah. So generally, we have one, we have one truck that we can use as a spare, and that's up, so it doesn't happen, so. But it's something we should think about in the future, is, these trucks are getting old, and we should think about replacing one of them. Also, David, the guys at the shop, when it's not snowing, we're out on the road, we're painting plow frames, we scrape the plow frames down, we scrape the plows and the wings, and we get everything looking good for, for summer, what's sitting out front. It's something to, for that to do. And, that's it, yes. Yep, that's it for me.
Did we get a motion for that, just then?
Not yet.
Okay. I'll make a motion to replace the ads for the fagots. All in favor?
Aye.
Carry it. All right, as far as supervisor, I mean, financially, we're in decent shape. We are most likely going to be a little bit ahead as far as what we originally budgeted as far as interest on the T-bills there, so that's good, so it's off the final numbers here, so it's going to be almost double what we originally figured, so, so we're, we'll also cover some of our shortfalls and some of these other areas, unexpected expenses and so forth. As far as anything new at the hospital, Nate ordered a new Lanai heater, because we're continually having problems, it's, there's, we rented out the basement of the clinic, and we've just been running electric heaters in there, and the furnaces are, that building is so efficient, they never really kick down, so it doesn't generate enough heat to heat the downstairs, so we have to just put in a small little Lanai heater to heat it, because electric is just, it's too much for those little things, and, but it was, it's fairly affordable, but it'll solve the problem, hopefully it'll be in by next week, so. As far as anything else, if we have anything else, even exciting, Sheila, would you give anything?
Um, so, well, February is over and done with, the taxes, so that's good. I do want to ask the board about adding my deputy Julie, Julie, Julie Stevens to the checking accounts. It's come to my attention, I actually have spoken to a couple of other clerks, and I know that you and I had that conversation, in regarding that I don't have a second signature on my, on my checkbook. It doesn't need to be done, but due to certain situations, that if I'm not here sometime during the end of the month, when I write the checks out, there's no one else can do it. So I would like to have a motion that I could add Julie to just my checking accounts. Also, in the tax account, that anything that's over a large amount, like $10,000, would actually have to have two signatures, and Julie would be my second signer. And that way, we would have checks and balances on it as well. So I'm just asking if I could have, if I would be able to do that?
Are you bonded?
Yeah, I've been bonded for a long time.
Is she, is she on the bond?
Um, she would, yes, because she is a part of the clerk of me, yeah, she's under me, yeah.
So she's, so she's been investigated and bonded?
Well, yep, she's been investigated as well of her previous job, too, yeah.
Okay. I don't have a problem as long as she's listed on the bond.
We're under the insurance of the town.
Hmm, that's not insurance, it's a bond. Do we have a bond? I don't even know.
No.
There's no bond?
There's no bond.
I mean, they have, they have a specific clause for, I forgot what the wording is on it there for, for employee...
It's for, I can't think of it either.
I know it's in there, but...
Employee theft, but is that only for liability or rising out of it, or is it for theft itself?
I don't know, I don't have a clause in front of me, but it's, we can certainly look at it, I, I suspect it would be...
It's supposed to be a boarder about it.
The law itself.
Is it for theft itself?
I, I'm not positive.
We should probably check that out to be sure.
I thought it was for the...
I can't believe I never thought of it before, but...
Yeah, I'm sure we have it, and I think it's a sustainable policy for, even in my own recids of everybody, you know, I've always seen that, you know, the other side and the other side. So, I don't know.
I don't necessarily do it with a bond.
I've been bonded for years from different situations, so I can pass it...
So, so it's not, it's all of the accounts or just the...
No, just the clerk accounts.
Okay.
No, I don't have any, only my accounts, I don't want anything to do with anything else. I have enough of the three that I have. I have, I have three accounts, and the decals, the clerk, and the tax. And that's the only, only ones that I have control over.
And you can, we can definitely do that, and they, I know you, I was, but I mean, can you, is it, we don't need Joe's approval on this?
No, it's just a motion for me to, to ask, and then I'll put them in the minutes, so what will happen?
Like to other towns, is it?
Yes.
Does Mary have them as a signer on?
Yeah, there's a lot of the other clerks have other signers, just in case something, you know, you have an emergency situation, that you have somebody that can come in, and Julie's, if I'm not here, Julie's here anyways, at the end of the month. And you made a good point the last time we spoke about the, the tax check, so that's why I brought it up, and I spoke into a couple of the other clerks, and they have the same policy, they have another signer on it.
The boarder in Delaware.
Correct. And so, and so what would happen is, is that I would get a motion, I put it in the minutes, I go to NBT, I talk to Tammy Hood. What will happen is, nothing will happen until these minutes of this meeting is approved, and then I take those over to the NBT bank, and then Julie comes with me, and then we just, she signs a signature card, and nothing's going to change, except for, for if I'm not here.
What is the maximum amount she's allowed to sign on an individual check?
Well, not, $10,000 and above, you have to have two signatures.
So she would be able to write, how many $10,000 checks?
Well, I don't...
Not that I think she's anything dishonest, I'm not trying to cast any aspersions, you know?
So right now, I write a tax check, and this is public knowledge of the checks that I write for taxes. I write over a million-dollar checks.
Right. And you're an elected official.
And I'm elected official. She is my responsibility. So, I don't have anybody right now, except for myself, and when Eric and I spoke last month, when I gave you the check for the town, it was a very large check, and I am the only one that is on that account. Once we had that conversation with Eric, I went and spoke to several of the other clerks that I know in the county, and there are several clerks that have more than one person on their accounts. One is for the large amount, and also, if something happens at the end of the month that I'm not able to be here, then our bills get paid, and we have no problems. And it's only the clerks. I mean, I write out a $1,100 check, three checks, to Eric. So it would be that she would have the same responsibility as I would. But there's only one account that we write a large amount, and that's for the tax account, and that only goes from like January and February. March won't be a, March will be a decent one, but after that, I won't have a large check.
I seriously think we should take a look at, look at bonding. It's a sep, it's a separate issue, I mean, you know, it's a separate issue.
Well, I would just ask Bill Gordon to confirm, I know we have, and I don't know what the dollar amount limitation you're going to talk to my, I know it's...
We had a, Bill came to my office the other day, and that's...
Redefine, Frank.
So I'm not sure, but...
I'm, I'm not opposed to her, I know she's a good person.
I'll make a motion that, will you go ahead and do this?
I'll second it.
And then just, you know, with the provision in there that's capped it?
Yep, yep. Mm-hmm.
Could I have a second? Bill? All in favor?
Thank you.
All right. Highway, Frank?
Um, as Jamie alluded to, we'll be asking to replace a dump truck, a 2004, 120-years-old next year, and it's just nickel and dimed, and it's one of the ones that's in the shop, I believe.
Yes, it's in there.
And like I say, it's, it'll be 20-years-old, and it's just, we, our responsibility for the highways and the town of Sydney are second to none, and so it's a safety issue, I'm making a safety issue, and we need to replace it, and how we do that, whether we buy, you know, look into statewide, whatever, if we find one, because if you get an order one, the guy told me it could take a year or two to get it, because they bill them once you order them. So, every meeting, we'd be addressing this until, you know, if we find something, or we, you know, make a move on it.
What's the, what are we, what are we replacing, what is it?
2004 International Dump Truck, number 20.
So it's a dump truck?
Yes, it is a tandem.
A tandem, that's important, so it goes in a batch.
With plow and wing.
Wing, plow, and wing.
Yeah. We do.
And how many do we actually have, like?
Five.
We have five, but you have, how many people drive?
Six.
Six?
Yep.
Okay, so five, and then you drive one of them then?
Yeah.
Okay. And then you just use your plow truck per, is that considered one of the...
No, that's why I come down, and I'll do the parking lot, and I, before I call everybody, and I have a route that I can go and do, and then on my way home, I have some roads that I've got with that.
Gotcha. All right. Well, we can certainly start looking, just, I mean, I don't know if there's anything out there, the late, like, you say, oh, speaking with Masonville, they, they were fortunate to find a super low-mileage one there for, it was, it was under $100,000. But it had like, no miles, and it was like brand new, but...
Nothing worth it.
Or something, I don't know, but certainly explore, because you're talking, I mean, the initial numbers are how much?
Quarter million dollars.
Yeah, quarter to $200,000.
Yeah. So...
At one time, we were doing the same amount per year in the budget, and then one year we'd buy a pickup, first, small piece of equipment, then what was left over, we'd go into 100 to cover for that account, so that next year, we'd add that to that account, we'd have a lot of bigger, but that, we'd just, we'd find, save the most cash in that account.
But we just, so we just got a brand-new plow truck this past year, too, right? The medium-sized one?
Medium-sized one, yep. That's what we're getting this year, coming in April.
Hey, but we have total, how many trucks though, right now?
There's about 10. Yeah.
All 10 plow trucks?
Yeah, both pickups in there, and medium-sized trucks included.
Okay. Well, something we'll have to look at. Maybe we should pick sometime, we could all go down and take a tour there sometime, I think that would be beneficial, just to see vintage and what we've got.
Nate's truck on there. That's including Nate's truck, too.
And the damn truck, too.
The old damn truck.
Truck, right. So you, but you have, so how many of those, you said were pickups, then? Two?
Yeah. Two. Actually, yes, three, two medium-sized, two pickups, and the rest are...
Okay. And you have how many dumps, though?
Five.
Five. Okay. That, when we just bought, does that have a dump?
Yes.
It did also?
It's a medium-sized with a plow and wing with a dump on it.
What was, what do we end up paying on that, was the total?
Hundred and seventeen thousand.
Hundred and seventeen.
Yeah.
And the main reason for going to the great big, was just that much wider, and you can carry that much more?
Yeah, we can take enough sand with us to do the whole room, where the medium-sized one can take enough salt, and he does all the roads, the main road, the river road, crane, cover bridge, Otego, and all of the river, and he can do all that, on those, this medium-sized truck, with Pierce, salt. And I carry salt, the truck that I drive, I carry salt, then I do the Sidney Center Streets, and a couple of side roads, and parking up.
How were we overall this year for salt, I mean, we, with this...
We're doing pretty good. We, far as, I think we're 300 tons over what we had from last year. So we're doing all right with the salt. We're using more because of the ice and everything, but we're still not too, too bad.
Good.
We're over, but not dangerously over.
Good. All right. Anything else? Frank?
Um, tough for the highway, no. No.
All right, well, let's move on to the hospital. Um, we're exploring a few things there, it's just kind of the exploratory stage, but we're looking at possibly the feasibility of turning the old skilled nursing wing into, like, senior apartments, and it's just in the beginning stages. We went up there last weekend, or the week, week before it was, or when did we...
About, yeah.
Couple weeks ago, so, but the end, just, you know, to see as far as from a code standpoint, and then we can sit together as a group and discuss it, and look at numbers, see if it all makes sense. I mean, the building itself is in really decent shape, you know, on the second floor there, so it's just a question of how many you could get in there, and then we, the architectural firm we used to do the drawings for this out of Norwich, they were actually...
Yeah, the principal company.
Fairly reasonable, and, you know, as far as giving ideas, but that, that's the thing, it's, depends on what, you know, choose, if you're going to put it in a nursing home, that's obviously a lot more restrictive, and what needs to be done, but...
We're not talking about the town itself administering?
No, it is like, you'd have to, you know, get like a rental agency or something like that, but it's, it would just not be assisted or anything, just like a senior living kind of thing for maybe people in the area that are, you know, their spouse, you know, passed away, and they still want some interaction, and not ready to go to a nursing home, and make it, you know, somewhat of a...
They're just tired of on their own lawn.
But it's, you know, it's, it's, you know, it's unused space for the most part on that, that one floor, and it's actually, I think it'd be a really good thing for the community, so if it's something that we could make happen, we will certainly do, but we'll just, we'll have to do a lot of things, it's just kind of the beginning stages now, but it's, I mean, they had done quite a bit of the renovations when they had the college there, that, but, you know, so that part's, you know, in pretty decent shape.
That, that whole thing was a nursing home at one time.
Yeah.
So you're, you're going from a, an I occupancy, which is institution, and you're actually So, you're, you're going from a, an I occupancy, which is institution, and you're actually downgrading to an R residential. So, it's very normal.
Great.
And you've got an architectural firm looking at?
No, we haven't. We just, we just looked at this a couple of weeks ago, and then, you know, I guess we'd have to sit with them and have them give us an estimate of what it would take to maybe just do a walkthrough and so forth, to, you know, confirm the feasibility. And then, you know, what would be the best plan of attack as far as, you know, bathrooms, and how would you do, you know, stoves, there's a couple of different ways you could go there, but...
Central laundry.
We probably all lived in smaller at some point in your life, I know, whether it's a dorm or something, you're not much to it. But I mean, it wouldn't have to be that, but they're, they're decent sized rooms, so it's...
They're decent sized rooms, yeah. I'm sure an architectural firm could figure something out.
They were, they were good here, so. Other than that, um, I believe where everything is, I think I mentioned before, you know, the lease was signed with, for, that's for the clinic, and everything is going forward for them to sign, you know, it's a continued lease on the hospital as well. So, everything is rolling along well there, so. Other than that, insurance?
Nothing new. Coming up sometime around May or June, I think we should start looking at putting together a risk management proposal for, simply putting it out for bid at the end of the year for reviews, just because we have it now.
Yes, he did. He had plenty of time.
Oh, they? No, he wasn't gonna, then something happened at the last minute that we didn't leave the second bid, would J.R. under him?
But he had plenty of time, because I knew that something happened, he had, he had an emergency, I think.
Yeah, okay, so. Zoning, Frank?
Oh, Dan, you want to start off? Oh, sure, yeah. Last Friday, I think it was, we had a first committee meeting.
Second.
The second? Will you actually count the first one? Well, the first one, we said hi to everybody. Like the first official, uh, committee meeting last Friday to discuss the updates for handling view. Thanks to our amazingly smart consultant, Shelley Johnson, we actually came together really well. You know, we have the framework, and, uh, two weeks from tomorrow, actually, we're going to set up another meeting and finalize it. And at that point, I guess we'll put it to public comment.
At that point, we'll release what we have.
That's all I have.
Well, we got a, uh, meeting on the twentieth, the planning group, the...
Yeah.
The twentieth, so hopefully we'll be able to give them a report also, and send for our next meeting. We're set up pretty good. All I have.
All right, you said anything, John?
Letters went out Wednesday, Rachel, was it Wednesday? Tuesday, Wednesday, I don't know, Thursday, whatever. The letters went out to all the campers from last year, so I'll be waiting to hear from all them if they're coming back this season. The new septic hauling truck is just about complete. I need a few more details tied up on that, and that'll be ready to go. Hoping the weather breaks here soon, so we can get back to work, but everything's moving along. I did get the renewal for the D C permit for the sewage transport, so I emailed that to them today. Everything's moving forward.
All right.
We're going to a playground too, right?
We're going to a playground for Frank, too. Frank wants a new playground. We got a teeter totter.
Yeah, I've seen that picture that was swiped about.
More and more of the detail.
How long does this take?
We'll do that.
Yeah, okay, that'll work. Hey, we, Jamie and I met with Mike Salletti, um, with the Sidney Center group there, and they're going to help with setting up some of the playground equipment, setting in drilling holes, not drilling holes, but helping move the stuff into place.
Bunch of toys they bought, some children's toys, and we're going to help put and install them. They got a lot of plans. It's turned out pretty nice.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, uh, finance, anything?
I think you covered it during the board report.
Yeah, other than, I guess it's really fun, and I know, were you going to mention about, you just finished the audits?
I can't, it's, uh, I have a new business, but I can jump to it if you'd like.
Yeah, I can already have it.
Okay, um, did, did, I did the yearly court audits, we planned, uh, anyways, but, um, did the same time last year, it was early March last year also, and everything, the procedures and the figures were all fine. But they need us to put it in our minutes that it has been done, and then we will send what we did to, uh, internal audit services unit, um, once we've, um, just a matter of a procedure, is, is the audit has been done, and you got, you know, I have it here if you guys want to see it. It's not a public thing, but, um, so duly noted in minutes, and then we'll send the audit copy of it, actually, I'll send the main one, if I can, to this group here, and I'll quote on the hazard it goes to. But everything came out fine, you know, and, uh, all we, our access nodes are fine, T's and I's, what are you going to call it? So, but they do need to have it in the minutes, and we do need to send this on to powers that be. That's it for the current court audit, I guess. I'll have the direction of where it goes to and audit itself here, if you'd like to see that.
We've got two more else we've got to do, what is it, the hospital, and then we've got to do?
Yeah, Sheila. Sheila in the hospital, we need to check out.
All right, uh, I T, Paul?
All right, um... I set up a vendor meet with Evans Gov for the twenty fourth of, um, this month. Uh, the reason why I called them in is because I just want to get an idea of how the infrastructure is set up here, and take a little peek at how they're handling cybersecurity and threat prevention. I'm going to be honest with you, I have no idea what they have out there, but it'd be a good idea to talk, you know, so they're, so they're a sense of comfort, so they're protected. So, that's happening on the twenty fourth.
Nine o'clock, see you?
That's nine o'clock.
When did you send it?
Uh, Tuesday.
Did you send it texted or?
I sent it in, though. Um, so that's that. As far as the web, it's out there. Um, now we have a nice new group shot. Thank you, Jamie.
We'll put it up. We'll put it up.
But I do want to start working on notification service.
Yes.
Okay, notification service is important, because, at least I believe it's important, because it gives the community another way of finding out about our town. What do you use, other than the paper and W C D R? And then we have John. Hi, John.
Hi.
You ready? Two weeks? We just got to get a couple more dishes up, and then we're going to go in there and configure a captain portal, so we can start registering, assessing, assessing. We should talk about this, how we're going to handle the password and stuff, any license plates, we'll figure it out. And, um, and that's all, so, you know, I was thinking, the, this project is a lot of fun. You know, it is a lot of fun, you know? There's a lot of knowledge behind it. I was wondering if anybody knows any college students that are any, graduating with an I T degree or something, that would like to get some sort of internship? To give Sheila a call to get in touch with me, we'll bring them down, and then give us, you know, help us out a little bit. There's a lot of work to be done down there, and it'd be good to have them on hand, and it'd be good for college credits. And, um, that is it for now.
Question?
Yes.
I noticed we were doing the bills that we're paying for, um, during the, you know, the off months when Dave's had open, we're paying for the I T there.
It's a contract.
And, okay, just wondering.
Right, but it's, it's a good thing, though, because, that's what I talked to you about. Uh, I do want to put some cameras in there, to give, we have cameras, it's, um, there you go, so it's justified.
I showed him.
This is the main gate, you're showing me, but now, this is the main gate.
Well, Frank, that brings up another question. I, when I was doing the bill, we're still paying Frontier.
That is an argument that I'm having with Frontier right now, because last May, when we ordered, uh, Delight Telecom, I put the cancellation with the, and we're going back and forth, and I'm saying, oh, we didn't see it, it's like, well, but I did it on the business phone, so I did a recording of it, so I'm just searching for it, and just send it over to them, and have them back.
They could possibly owe us money, then.
Yeah, they owe us money. And again, uh, Sheila...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sheila and I, I was on the phone together a couple of weeks ago, canceled it again, so that's how Frontier is. It's a conglomerate that really is here. That's why we love it.
They felt banker to it.
Yeah. Oh, they did?
They're real close.
So, they're pretty much out of here.
The only people I know with bigger rust pipes than you.
It's a lot faster.
Drive around, you ever see the trucks that run?
Well, they're texting you back, so.
Yeah.
All right, Bill, anything else?
No.
Dark control? No. All right, Frank, you already got the court audit. Uh, you want to talk a little bit about your idea with the A E D?
Uh, the A E D, the defibrillator, um, we're thinking that it'd be, this would be a good building to have once, because D M V we have over here, and of course, it's on the other end, you know, assessors here, and he has offices here. But it should be by, it should be... Yeah, one day. But we figured it should be in the middle of the building, because, uh, certain doors are not accessible. And for it to be accessible by all ends, it'd have to be in Sheila's area. But I need, uh, and Jamie can comment more on this. Jamie has, uh, gone ahead and ordered, he has one now in place at, at the Highway Garage. And, um, he has a pretty good deal.
Do you know how much it was?
Yes.
Off the top of your head?
Yep. We pay a hundred and twenty dollars a month for three years. And then at the end of the three years, we either own it, or we can trade it in a better one or newer one. But that includes, um, everything. I mean, a guy comes in once a month, checks the battery. They come in, do maintenance on it? Yes, battery, they check the pads, the wires, everything, and they replace it. It's all in the contract.
And as far as, um, operating it, talk to you through the whole thing?
Yes.
To be like a certified technician or whatever you're on?
And Sidney Center Fire Department, there's a girl there, she's going to train us in the A E Ds.
Oh, okay.
See if you're ready. They operate, the Centas operative, but it was real expensive, and I said, no, thank you, we got, we'll do it ourselves.
Yeah.
Is that who, you do it through six of us?
Yes.
Is that who you said?
Yes, yep. Our first aid people.
The training, the training issue for the lady from Sidney Center Fire Department, we scheduled that, we have someone from the D M V, someone from the court to come take it also. If we do, if we, you know, wanted to put a defibrillator in a building, is, I don't know, we need a motion or what to do that, I don't know.
I would just, you know, put it out and just shop it, just to make sure that, you know, or to jury to shop it pretty thorough.
I started to, and then Steel came up, and as far as my shopping, you know.
Uh, so, because originally, you thought at lunch, you were a couple of grand, and that one's thirty six.
A hundred and twenty dollars a month, times twenty four months, you know, that's...
You say thirty six, twenty four, thirty?
That's about what they were, you know, but this includes all your training.
That's not bad, but your maintenance, you know.
They're between two grand and twenty five hundred. You just bought two of them, you know, like, first. About twenty five hundred a piece.
There's a prescription, you got a prescription for it, to where to put it in? So, that includes the prescription?
Subscription?
Subscription?
John, do you have one?
Okay.
No, we're going to get one prescription.
Yeah.
That's for...
Your, your batteries, your ba, well, your batteries should last two years.
Yeah.
But your batteries are anywhere for four or five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Frank, while you're shopping, get a price for, for the dam, too.
Yeah.
That's a nice safety.
Motion.
Make a motion, Paul.
My question for that, would they, like, if they have been removed?
Probably wouldn't be in the cold.
You don't want to leave them in the cold.
No. That's what I figured.
I was bringing it down here, so we get the highway driving or something.
I wonder if that's something that's on state, better county.
Move forward on it.
Yeah, I'm all in favor of just getting hard numbers on it, and then we can improve it at the next meeting if everybody wants to, so that's our...
We got numbers on it.
Just get three quotes, right?
Or, or, you know, reach out to the county and the state.
So, he tells me every time, get three quotes.
But the training, it's like, I really want to concentrate on that, too, if we do get, you know, get going on this, and, uh, I'll, I'll get a couple of quotes on it.
See you in the twentieth.
See you.
Take care.
Speaking of training, we need to schedule training dealing with labor law and prevailing wage. Uh, we had it scheduled, we're tight scheduled, remember, for, it could maybe be a Friday afternoon or something. I don't want to drop the ball on that, I want to make sure we remember that.
Do we have a due on that, we're doing it?
Well, I'm not doing it. Department, New York State Department of Health is coming in, and he's gonna, I'm just trying to coordinate.
Didn't he give his date before, and then he changed it or canceled?
We couldn't, for some, I don't know what happened there, we got, we got canceled. So, basically, I need a, a time and a day. Um, the gentleman works until four o'clock, Monday through thir, Monday through Friday. So, we have to do it kind of, basically, morning would be probably the best. It takes about an hour, hour and a half, and I'm not sure who would need to come to training. I'm, I'm definitely thinking that Cody should, and, okay, it's Highway, um, Nate for sure. And at least a board member or so should come and, and listen to it, to understand it. I mean, I'm going to, I'm, I'm going to go, because I'm the one that will do the paperwork, because there's paperwork involved in how to process it, to do it correctly, so we don't get our hands wet.
This is for harassment?
No, this is for labor law, for prevailing wage, so it, um... Yeah, and it, so, and there's a form that you have to fill out online, once we do like a major project, like, like the roofing.
We're putting apartments in.
Pardon?
We're putting apartments in.
Yeah.
The state sets up rates for, credit rates for everything, and you have to tell the state what your project is, and they will send you the rates and give you a P R C number. So, when the contractor comes in, you get that P R C number, and it has to be certified payroll, according to the, to the pay rates.
And I've spoken to this gentleman several times. He's, he's, seems very nice, knowledgeable. They, they did a very nice job helping me at the, what, the first time we had to do it. But he did say that it would be best if we had some training on how to do it, so we understand that all of our jobs have to, our large jobs have to have prevailing wage.
Is there a cap on it? Dollar amount?
No, I don't think there is.
I mean, so anything is prevailing, or is there, or is there a limit, like, is there, if it's five thousand or under?
No, I think there's no cap on it, and I think you have to, yeah.
Because even your big bridge jobs, million dollar bridge jobs have...
Well, those, I assume they would. What you're talking about is under the radar.
Correct, I'm saying is, if something's like a five...
There is no one, no, because...
You're, the guy comes from Rabos and delivers fuel. He's got to be up for daily maintenance gear.
Yep.
How do we, how do we prove that?
It's from Rabos.
Rabos, we'll do it. They'll do a search on everyone. The truck drivers that come to the gravel pit and grab on snow.
Wow, from the thirties.
I have another thing here, so. Um, what I wanted to speak about is the, the tax break, the, um, the county's approved for volunteer emergency personnel and firemen. Kind of waiting to see how other townships roll it out, and see, you know, what rules they come out with. Uh, but we want to make sure that the people that live in the town of Sidney know that we are, uh, aware of it, and that we will, uh, deal with it in a timely fashion.
I think that's a long time coming. I think that's a long time coming.
Wish you wanted to be the leader on it, to find out what's the.
I keep watching, I've been reading the, you know, the valley paper there, or report, or whatever it is, and see what everybody else is doing, Andes, or Valina, or Middletown, whatever, see what they're doing. Some were, some are at more advanced stages, they had public hearings, I think, but I'm more interested in the rules, you know, what it entails to order to get that tax break for emergency personnel.
Rest of the game for our.
Yeah, we're done. So now we're on, I'm finished with this.
Sydney Center Fire Department, so, um, they had asked, was the total dollar amount you had asked for, was it ten thousand even?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Do I have a motion to move forward, with everybody was here at the last meeting, they, it's for, if you wanna, can you, would you mind just giving a brief summary of what it was for?
Fire district and fire department members. The fire district and fire department members are looking to purchase a pickup truck to tow a recently purchased U T V and trailer. For assistance on calls. And we're looking for, hopefully, ten thousand dollars to help us make this possible. I don't know if Sheila gave everybody a copy of the letter, if it was submitted, or.
Yeah.
So we papered this out of the ARPA funds, and just have to make one in just when I had a, because it looked good, I think, so, do I have a second?
I'll sit.
Okay, all in favor? Frank?
All right.
All right. All right.
I'd like to thank the supervisor in town board for supporting us. We'd like to thank you for supporting us.
Someone that brought the chicken would be nice.
All right, well, we're moving right along here. Insulation for building.
Well, we, we tabled it, and I wasn't sure.
Yeah, we're still kinda.
We're gonna table it.
Yeah, I think so, because we got, it's a big project. Well, it's not, now we're dealing with possible roofs, so it's gonna make a big difference in how we do it, so. And then we're gonna tear it apart now, so. I'm gonna get up there and see where it's at. Any comments or questions from the floor?
I do. I just wanna ask John what the seasonal rate is for the campers, 'cause, you know, I'm hearing all different things, and people are chatting about it. I'm just curious.
Thirteen hundred.
For the sea, and that's May to October.
That's May, we open May fourth and close September twenty.
It's close to that.
Twentieth, somewhere around there.
And the bulk of the other rates were relatively.
Thirteen hundred.
Thirteen hundred.
The bulk of the other rates were roughly?
The closest campground to, similar to what we have right now is eighteen hundred. They range all the way up, Kelly Stone down in Nafton, Geneva, is twenty-two hundred. And it ranges, New York State, we're the lowest probably, but they range all the way up to six to seven to ten thousand dollars for a seasonal campsite.
You've come a long way though, with you there, additions and stuff. It's very nice.
We're trying to do a decent improvement every summer, so. We're getting there.
I was just curious.
They all got, everybody that came there last year got a letter that states the seasonal rate for this year. Should, they probably got them today or tomorrow.
Yeah, oh, yeah. That'll be moving in?
Won't be long.
Any other comments or questions? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make that motion.
All in favor? That's a fast for something you get.